Let's call the meeting to order. Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
By allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Roll call.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Here.
Chairman Glass?
Here.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Seig?
Here.
Commissioner Romero? Commissioner Putnam?
Here.
Okay.
Okay. Oral communications, anyone in the audience wish to speak on a subject that is not on the agenda this evening? Now would be the time to do it. Don't rush the podium. Okay. Set calendar. So what we got first minutes? Do we get a copy of the minutes from the...
If there wasn't money in your pockets, right there on the dice.
January and February minutes, right?
Because we didn't have a quorum for the January seventeenth.
Can we make one? If we, someone makes a motion, can we make one motion to approve both or should we do it separately?
Do it separately because I'm not sure who was or wasn't here in the January versus the February meeting.
Okay.
They might have to recuse themselves, so.
Okay.
So Commissioner Kennedy, I want you to make a motion for, sorry.
Sorry, okay. So we didn't entertain a motion for the first set of meeting minutes, which was what, the December sixth meeting?
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion to approve the December sixth minutes as presented.
Second?
I'll second.
And I'm gonna abstain.
Okay. Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Abstain.
Commissioner Seig?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
We still only have four. I don't have a five.
That's good.
Is that good?
Four out of seven, yeah, we're good.
Okay.
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 The next set of meeting minutes is from our February twenty-first meeting minutes. You want to make a motion to approve?
I will again make a motion to approve those minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Commissioners, Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Glass, I mean Chairman Glass, sorry.
Yes.
Commissioner Seig?
Yes.
And Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
Okay. So now we're on to item number two. And this has to do with Flex.
Yeah, good evening Chair and Planning Commission, Kelly Ruffo, contract planner. First item before you this evening is a request for a conditional use permit to change the allow alcoholic beverage control license for Flex Beer Garden from a type forty-two, which is on sale beer and wine, to a type forty, which is on sale beer only. They also would like to make a request to update their hours of operation and also had made a request to add an additional entrance to the property along Metro Pole Avenue. To address each individual request briefly, back in the beginning of, or the end of twenty twenty-two and beginning of twenty twenty-three, the Planning Commission had approved a conditional use permit, coastal development permit, and a site plan for the existing Flex Beer Garden property. As part of that, they had mentioned they want, as part of that application, they had requested for sale of beer and wine. A type forty-two license is a public premises license that does not allow minors on the property, so the, part of the reason they would like to switch to the type forty is when you go to a beer only, it does allow minors on premises. And according to the applicant, they would like to do that to be able to facilitate more family use of the property, which they, business, which they cannot do now. Because this was a difference, you know, going from an adult only to essentially a establishment that require, would allow minors, staff felt that that was a big enough change to what their operations were to come back to Planning Commission and have staff take a second look at it. Staff is recommending approval of their change to the type forty license. We've had no code enforcement issues, no calls for service from the Sheriff's Department to this property related to the use, and sheriffs and staff did not have any concerns about the addition of minors on the property, given that the applicant intends to provide kind of a full-range food service to the property, including hot food, which would kind of facilitate a more family environment use of the property versus, for instance, like a bar or a tavern type of atmosphere. The second item was their proposal to extend hours of operation. Currently, they are approved to operate from twelve noon to ten P.M. daily. They are requesting to extend those hours from ten A.M. to twelve A.M., so two hours on both sides, to accommodate summer weekend and potential later, like event use of the property. The property is located in District Two Noise Sensitivity Area, so that's the heart, which is the designation for essentially the heart of the commercial district, so there's no special restrictions on this property besides the standard noise code criteria. And the applicant is not requesting a special use permit for any kind of outdoor amplified music. Staff does not object to the request for extended hours, again, because there is no documented history of any code enforcement or PD complaints to the property about their operations, they would still be subject to all of the city's noise ordinance criteria, and it would be dealt with that way if there are any future complaints. And there is, of course, always the opportunity that if there is a repeat violation, staff could bring it back to Commission for further consideration. Item number three was the addition of the entrance along Metro Pole Avenue. For this project, this, this request, we did look at your original review of this project. There's obviously a lot of discussion related to how access to the property was gonna happen during the original review. Originally, it had been proposed along Metro Pole but was moved to Crescent Avenue as part of the final site plan that was approved by Planning Commission. As part of that original approval, there was also a requirement for a traffic study to be prepared by the applicant within eighteen months of the start of operations to essentially examine the multi, multimodal, you know, interaction between like pedestrians, golf carts, other types of traffic going through that area, and that, once that study was completed, the applicant would be responsible for any improvements that needed to be made to address any identified concerns. Because of that, staff is recommending that the additional entrance not be approved or considered at this time. They still need to, we've already had discussions with the island company about preparation of the traffic study, and we're working with them to agree on a finalized scope of what they're going to review, so that's done within the eighteen-month time period originally conditioned. And then if, based on that study, we would revisit the idea of opening additional two-way pedestrian entrance depending on the results of that study. So again, staff is recommending approval of the project for extended hours of operation and the new type forty A B C license, based on the findings and conditions of the staff report and the attached resolution. Applicant is available for any comments or questions that you have this evening, and thank you.
So you're recommending two out of three?
Correct, so we did not include the additional entrance, we didn't even include a site plan review as part of this, because really it's, it's not at a point where they can make that recommend.
Gotcha.
Request.
So it says that it would come back and do administratively though, right? So, so should we not look at where they want to put? Or is it, are, because there's two gates there, there's a gate and a bigger gate and a smaller gate there, are they gonna use those?
So the request by the applicant when they submitted was that the rolling gate closer to the intersection, so near, closer to Crescent, would essentially add a mandor, you know, like entrance that would be a two-way entrance in and out of the property. So I wanted to clarify, because that's still shown on their site plan, that is not something that we are approving or considering at this time. Because it's a pretty minor change to the property, usually things like that would be considered under the new minor renovation criteria that are in the code for site plan review. But again, without the benefit of the traffic study yet, staff doesn't, thinks that that might be the way it could be handled, but obviously we're not gonna make a final determination on that until that study is completed. Because if there's anything that comes up that would potentially conflict with your previous findings, we would bring it back to you at that time.
I know when this first came up in front of us, part of what they were gonna do was serve food, and it was open to kids. They opened, they didn't serve food, and it was not open to kids.
We knew that it wasn't do that, because they didn't have the right license.
Okay.
They knew they couldn't get the right license to begin with.
Gotcha, gotcha.
So that was gonna be done in the future, I think, right?
So their current license, which is a type forty-two, prohibits minors.
Gotcha, okay. So this, this would correct that. It doesn't add any food or anything like that, just say they could, but they haven't done it.
So one of the conditions of approval is, previously when they had brought this before you, they mentioned they were gonna have sort of light snacks available and the ability to have delivery food. Because they are switching to the license that will allow minors and are trying to have more of a family usage of the property, we're actually requiring as a condition of approval that that hot food service be available. Now that can be done on-site if they get the appropriate building permits for that, or they can have the delivery come from either of the two island company businesses that are nearby, so they'd be, they, in their application, mention the Bistro or Antonio's, which is now gonna be Pier Twenty-four.
And the menu in there meets that name?
Yeah, because we really wanted to have more than just chips and popcorn available. I mean, the idea is that when food, food is available, there's less of an, less of a likelihood for there to become issues related.
Something to dilute what you're there doing.
Correct.
So just...
This is pizza.
Well, yeah, I just wanted to clarify before, so previously to, or right now, you would call the restaurant and order it, is this gonna be, they order it on-site and then, then, I mean, is it gonna, is that gonna change how they order it, or is it still gonna be like?
That's my understanding, but I'll let the applicant clarify exactly how that's gonna work.
Order at the bar.
Yeah.
Please.
It does say that, okay, yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, so some clarification on the food, because it's, we're in an interim period, so legally with both of those licenses, we're required to have snacks, which we're going to have. We completely accept the conditions of approval, pardon me, which is to have hot food at all hours of operation. So right now, we're working on and will have it installed well in advance of any permit happening. Hot dogs prepared off-site, we're in the current process of getting these permitted, where we can actually have a, a hot dog warmer that can sell hot, hot dogs on-site. And the reason for that is, A, there's been a request for hot food at all hours of operation, which we completely support, and there'll be a little bit of an interim period between Antonio's and Pier Twenty-four where we don't have that, which is what we've always had. So obviously, we're trying to get Pier Twenty-four open for the summer as quickly as possible, but having the hot dogs as kind of a hot food option on-site, not only helps us maybe in an interim period, which we kind of hope we don't have, but if we do, at least we have the hot food available, but it also will be a long-term thing, because let's say Pier Twenty-four closes at ten P.M., but maybe there's a crowd at the Beer Garden until ten, or let's say an hour after that, right? We have that interim period where, no, you can't order from Pier Twenty-four, but the Beer Garden's open, so the hot food alternative in that case would be the hot dog. So it's currently being planned and permitted and will be in place well before any new license is granted for the property, but it will also continue because, you know, of the void of the switch over to restaurants and the void of potential restaurants closing before Beer Garden.
Kind of a simple fix to get some food to someone's stomach if they need it.
Yeah, and, and one other thing I wanted to just hit on is on the other pedestrian entrance, we proposed, you know, originally it was a traffic study was what was required, and I think we have till July to get it done. And the basic idea was to just make sure that there weren't, or should I say, that there, there wouldn't be an issue with people coming out that secondary entrance onto the Metro Pole sidewalk and kind of causing blockage and walkarounds and that kind of thing. So we've proposed a fairly detailed scope of work to the city to review, because, you know, this is kind of a unique traffic study, right? It's pedestrians mostly, but also bicycles, cars, carts, and trucks, and so they're currently reviewing that scope of work. And once they agree and we're all kind of in agreement on what actually needs to be done and how it's gonna be done and when it's gonna be done, then we'll actually do the study, which we expect to be in probably April or May, and that'll help make the decision on that secondary issue. And I'm happy to answer any other questions that there may be on the food or any other question on that.
I guess the only thing I'm saying is, you're doing the hot dogs and you'll do them longer, but once you open up Pier Twenty-nine or what's the name of it, I'm sorry?
I, I, they've told me that it'll stay, because once it's permitted and put in place, the, the hot dogs would stay.
But they would start bringing then food from your other restaurant?
Yes, absolutely, yeah. The, the menu in the application is what used to come from Antonio's. So it'll...
That may change.
Not gonna be exactly the same, but the general idea is, you know, to have a good selection of, you know, family-friendly salads, pizzas. I honestly don't know what the menu for Pier Twenty-four is gonna be, but I think the menu that was at Antonio's, I think the new menu will be, if, the same or grander, if you will, or more choices, if you will. And, and, you know, as part of that, by the way, there, when they're redoing the kitchen at Pier Twenty-four, there's going to be some like oven capacity upgrades, because now they know, you know, that...
Servicing across the...
Yeah, which wasn't the case before, and sometimes there was glitches, but we're, you know, we're learning as we go and trying to make it optimized, so to speak.
And this is gonna make it, by changing the, the alcohol permit, it's gonna make it family-friendly, now you can...
Yeah, yeah, and there's no legal requirement for that, but I think we all know that, you know, when you've got a family that you want stuff like what we had.
Yeah.
You know, pizzas, hot dogs, salads, whatever. And so really, at the end of the day, this, this, the change is mostly about losing wine but gaining families, which we're happy to do, and it's just that kind of period between Antonio's and Pier Twenty-four, and also the times where Pier Twenty-four may close before Beer Garden that we need to have the hot dogs on-site.
Any questions of the applicant? Discussion?
So I just have a question. Music after ten, will you be, is that like the same as the municipal code for, so?
Correct. It, it won't change the municipal, anything here will not change what's in the municipal code.
Correct.
That means you'd have no amplified music.
Okay, after ten.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, that directly affects that hotel.
And, you know, I'll just add that those won't be the hours every day, it's kind of the, it's kind of like a lot of the tourist...
Maybe Friday, Saturday, if it works out, but it might not be...
So it'll never, yeah, it'll never go beyond that, and it often won't go till that, but there's that opportunity, like let's say Fourth of July weekend, you would hope that it might stay open that late.
What is the code on Fridays and Saturdays, is it different than?
No.
Is it the same for every day of the week? Okay.
I think it's an hour later on Friday and Saturday, but it's still not beyond ten.
Still not beyond ten.
Right.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm glad to hear about the food, because I know when we approved this last time, Jessica, one of the main things she brought up is that we'll be able to take families, and they are gonna serve some food there, and now this looks like it's gonna fall in line with what we originally went for, so that's good. What do you guys think of the hours? Personally, I like to start drinking at ten, but I'm kidding.
Can't drink all day unless you start in the morning.
But again, you know, some people do, some people don't, it's not, not up to me.
It doesn't bother me, but, I mean, it's not like it's been a real rowdy place.
No, yeah.
I guess the only thing would be is if they had a, an event, like a, I don't know, a birthday party or something, but they would still have to stop and kind of...
They'd still have to stop at ten.
Music at ten, right?
Right.
Anyone wanna make a motion or any further discussion?
I'll make a motion.
Ooh!
What?
Open the hearing, I didn't open the hearing, my bad, thank you, sir. Show up late and you still know. Now we've spoken to the public, now any more questions? Then we'll close the public hearing. Thank you, Eric. Any more discussion on this issue?
I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use permit application with the five conditions of approval that the city has set forth per the staff recommendation.
I'll second. Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Chairman Glass?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Seig?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
All eyes. Motion passes.
Okay, this is for a public hearing on the growth ordinance?
Thank you, Chair. So second item this evening is the public hearing and consideration of the twenty twenty-four growth policy and recommendation to the City Council. So yearly, the, the City Planning Commission and City Council review kind of the growth permitted in the preceding ten month, ten, or in this case, twelve months, consider the effects and demands of that development and determine what the permitted growth will be in the following year. The largely based on, with consideration of the city's current water allocation status. So that's, as far as development in the previous year, so staff did not permit, provide, or Planning Commission did not approve any entitlements for new residential development last year, largely development consisted, requests consisted of modification to licensing to existing establishments or transient rental licenses for residential properties. As far as the city's water allocation status, we spoke to S.C.E. at the beginning of March to confirm, the city is not currently in a state of rationing for water, there's no stage one, stage two, stage three. However, the, this time, no new freshwater allocations are anticipated to be issued by S.C.E. until they complete a analysis of the available water supply and potential surplus. Part of that is they are considering that Phase Two of the desalination plant has been approved and will be under construction soon, so that is part of, I think, what they want to take into consideration. So given that there's, as last year, there is no anticipated water availability as there was in twenty twenty-four, we're making the same recommendations that we did for the twenty twenty-three growth policy.
So we don't think there's gonna be any water allocations for this year? This is the second year of massive rain, full reservoir, we could have been so far ahead of this, it seems to me, I mean, Edison could have been.
So S.C.E. did say they would be meeting this month to kind of discuss where they are currently, so that may, may or may not change, but I was told that, to be conservative, not to anticipate anything until the end of the year. So since this policy is really meant to go through October, that's why we're making the same recommendations we did last year in terms of what could be approved. And we'll, we'll bring this back to you again in November to consider what's been done January to October and make new recommendations.
Glad I don't run my business that way.
I don't do it either, pardon.
They're just amazing.
Super aggravated.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that study should have been done.
Well, you're in the business of selling water, right? But you don't really wanna sell it. Just makes a lot of flipping sense.
Yeah.
And here we are, a community needing housing, needing some upgraded development, and we're held hostage by a purveyor that's in the business of selling the product you can't have. Just makes a lot of flipping sense.
How many years have we been waiting?
Forty that I've lived here.
That's crazy.
When do you draw the line?
Don't disagree with the frustration, but I would point out that they, we do have a number of projects that they've extended that hopefully are in the queue for housing. So it's not that, you know, ones that were lined up before that were, that had some water allocations that were coming to expire, they have extended those. So hopefully those projects will happen.
Get moving, maybe. We're just, like everyone, I think, just frustrated, but...
Right.
Yeah.
Well, we...
And thirsty.
We've got a lot of rationing, and then it takes them forever to figure it out, and then we're back in rationing, and it just seems like it's just been this way since I've been on, and I've been on here like ten years.
Well, it wasn't too long ago, they did engage in a study, and that study was gonna be a public document that we could use to help plan our community, and at the twelfth hour, it no longer became available to us to use as a tool, because it, it pointed out some of their inefficiencies, so.
So you guys are dealing with what we have to deal with, obviously, right?
Thank you for the update.
With that being said, I'll make a motion to approve the growth policy.
Lack of growth policy.
Lack of growth policy that the city has presented us to, bonanza.
Yeah, and to clarify, it'll be a recommendation to the City Council to accept the growth policy.
Couldn't have said it any better.
Thank you.
I would ask you to clo, I'm sorry, close the public hearing for...
Yes. Open the public hearing, anyone who wants to speak on this matter, please step forward now or forever hold your peace. Close the public hearing, that's twice.
Say, Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Chairman Glass?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Seig?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
All eyes, that motion passes.
And Commissioner Business? Can we adjourn?
Good night, Tony.
Go faster, Bob. We're adjourned. Good night, Tony. I didn't know it.